Jacob has 277 and Ruto has 102. But when you come to this, now he has 77 and here it is 302. And noting that these are forms that reflect all the features of IABC. And when you look at it clearly, this cannot be an edited manual editor. It is something that was typed through the same system that was typing on the other one and then imposed on this watermark paper, which is officially owned by IABC only, nobody else. So when you look at it, you have also another one here where Jacob has 149 and Ruto has 191. And here he has 188 and here is 111. But then when you go to this side, now he has only 49 and this is 291. And here we have 88 and this is 211. So 111 changes to 211 and 191 changes to 291. And here 188 changes to 88. When you come down here, there's also another one where you can see that here he has 156 and Ruto has 132. But then when you come to this, now he has 106 and here he has 182. So by looking at it, it was a deliberate effort to take 50 from here and also award 50 on the other side. So by looking at this, you can see that there's a lot of, a number of deductions that took place. But now in the initial figure, Jacob should be having 34, 345. And Ruto should be having 11, 7 or 9. But in this other portal, the one at the IABC portal, the one at BOMAS, the one that was used to declare results, now that gives him 33, 795 and Ruto now has 12, 259. It shows that he's still living in this constituency. But you can see a number of votes have been taken from him and given to the other side. Now, let me take you to everything so that I finish and let you see what happened. The way of which I don't want to waste time. This is directly found online, we have placed it there and it's purely available for everybody to see. When we tried to show it a little to the journalists, the following evening, some people decided to inject some code onto it and it crashed instantly. When we asked those who are hosting it, they told us that that injection is coming from your country, Kenya. So we decided to shift it to a different hosting platform so that it became private and we have been unable to inject anything on it again. So it is available and you can get it anytime you want and I want to take you through it. Now, that is figured that already been discussed, that has been discussed. Now, let me take you to a summary of all the constituencies first before taking you to the specific polling stations. In the all the constituencies, you can see that after analyzing the whole project, we realized that in Mombasa County, it is only two constituencies that were affected. And that is in Likkoni and in Umvita where Jacob lost 100 votes and Dr. Ruto gained 100 votes. And here Jacob gained, lost 400 votes and Dr. Ruto gained 400 votes. Then when you come to the others in Kualé, only two were affected. And here we have the figures as you can see. So this is what happened in Kilifi, only one station, I mean one constituency at one station, that is. Now, I want to take you to the regional values. Because it will be faster to look at them in regional formats than in county formats. Now, when you look at the regional values, you note that at the end, IABC awarded Jacob 649,000 votes and awarded Dr. Ruto 336,000 votes. That is the official result from the IABC portal. But when we look at the other results that the EDG gave me, it resulted that Jacob was to have 651 and Ruto to have 334. Meaning he lost 1,950 votes and Ruto gained 1,950 votes in coast region in total. Then when we come to northeastern region, I'll show you again here. But now, IABC awarded Jacob 352,000 votes and awarded Dr. Ruto 196,000 votes. But in our analysis on the other side, it gave Jacob 374,000 votes and Dr. Ruto 174. Meaning 22,000 votes were taken from Jacob and Dr. Ruto added 21,000 votes. You may think these are the so-called hot air, but I will show you where they come from. Now, when we come to upper eastern, the IABC awarded Jacob 149,000 votes and Dr. Ruto was given 731,000 votes. While in the analysis, we have Jacob was to get 232,000 votes and Dr. Ruto was to get 648,000 votes. Now, here the deductions go higher and now he's losing 83,000 votes and Dr. Ruto is gaining 83,000 votes. When we go to lower eastern, we note that here, IABC portal gave Jacob 769,000 votes and Dr. Ruto was given 250,000 votes. This looks clear, but you see when we look at what we added on the other side, we have 770,000 votes and 245. That means in the lower eastern, Jacob lost only 1,400 votes. And then Dr. Ruto gained 1,5100 votes. Now, we come to central province. Now, in central province, we have IABC portal at BOMAS giving Jacob 423,000 votes against Dr. Ruto's 1.6 million votes. While when we add onto the other side, Jacob should be having 1.07 million votes and Dr. Ruto having 1.016 million votes. I will show you where they all came from. And here, he lost a total of 604,000 votes and Dr. Ruto gained 615,000 votes from central province. And we decided to settle here a little bit and say that it's common knowledge that a sitting president was coming from central province and he was on this other side. So it's possible that there was a sharing of 50/50 votes in central province. And given that this data is almost reflecting that, I think a 50/50 is a fair game in central province, knowing the people, how vibrant they are in that place. Then, we come to Rift Valley, which is the largest voting block. And here, IABC comfortably gave Jacob 1.1 million votes from BOMAS and Dr. Ruto was given 2.666 million votes from BOMAS. And our addition from Rift Valley gave Jacob 1.4 million votes and Dr. Ruto 2.3 million votes. Looking at it, 1.1 and 1.4 in a voting block of the whole of Rift Valley is not far from the truth. It's true that you can see that it's possible that the 1.4 was highly attainable because we should have seen what we are seeing in central, in Rift Valley. Because in central, it was 400,000 votes only and in Rift Valley, he has 1.1 million votes. And this other system is not exaggerating, it is giving 1.4. So we can see that he lost 336,000 votes in central, I mean in Rift Valley as a whole. And Dr. Ruto gained 346,000 votes. When you come to western region, the ruling votes as we speak, Jacob had 845,000 votes against Dr. Ruto's 513 in IABC portal. But when we analyze the other dataset, we have Jacob having 892,000 versus 466,000 votes. Meaning in western province or western region, all of it, he lost 47,000 votes and Dr. Ruto gained 46,000 votes. You can see that the consistency in that what you lose on this side, you gain on that side almost gives credibility to this as a very pre-planned outcome that was meant to be. When you come to Nyanza region, we have IABC giving Jacob a total of 1.87 million votes versus Dr. Ruto's 283,000 votes. Knowing Nyanza as it is, well, we know that's possible. Then when we look at what comes out at the other dataset, we have Jacob having 1.89 million votes, just 1.9 million votes and then Dr. Ruto getting 261. So here, he was also denied 20,000 votes and Dr. Ruto awarded 22,000 votes. Then we come lastly to Nairobi as a region, which is also a county on its own. Then we have, from IABC portal, he's given 757 and Dr. Ruto is given 535,000 votes. But in the, in the other dataset, we have 822, 623 and 470, giving him a loss of 65,000 votes and Dr. Ruto gaining 65,000 votes as well. Apparently, the other dataset for diaspora was not available. So we relied basically on the portal data and that's why we have 00 there. So we have a set of data that were not available and that is why we only work with what was there. So looking at it carefully, you will note that in the end, His Excellency, the Prime Minister, lost 1.182 million votes and Ruto was awarded 1.2 million votes nationally. And in that, now if you add all these data values and all this and all this, you're going to have 8.112, 244 million votes and then Dr. Ruto having 5.9. So when you hear His Excellency, the Prime Minister saying, "I have been having 1.81 million votes", this is the breakdown in the constituency format. And Dr. Ruto, he has been saying, has been having 5.9 million votes. This is the breakdown in the constituency format so that you can easily track it. Because looking at it on the final value is confusing that everybody else would be asking, "Where are those values coming from?" So with that, allow me to now take you to the last section of this presentation. I'll choose a few constituencies and then just that it. This website is arranged in a very easy way. In this part, we have the county and then the constituency. On this first column for downloads, you have the original server form. That is the form that was obtained later from IABC. We have listed them all here and then we have the BOMAS portal forms. Someone may be asking, "Where did you get the BOMAS portal forms?" Because they removed them from their portal. I told you that I got sort of excited with seeing that dataset and I said, "Let me download it earlier." So I downloaded all of them at the right time when it was still fresh. And I can show you here that these are the data from the IABC. You can see my download dates. Here, that modify the last download dates that this was all on August. These are 888, I mean. You can see 888 and the dates and then 2022. That means these are the authentic data, forms 34B from the IABC that were used to inform from 34C, that were used to inform from 34D, that were finally declared. So these are the correct datasets. So that's where we have them and my logs are showing clearly that they are genuine and they are authentic. So if you download this, then you will be actually downloading the server form. You go through it, look at it, you will see that it's exactly a copy of the other form. But let me go and download it again for this one. This is the IABC portal form. And if you look at them, you can only detect from the signatures that these forms are no far from being, they are no different at all. So let me take you to the signature part and look at them. I want to look at just this telephone number written here. It is 8 and 5 is crossing this line. And when I take you to this, not to this, you can also see that 8 and 5 is crossing the line. So it's basically the same form signed by the same people. But when you take them through a process that we did, then I take you here and you'll see the outcome. Now, let me be clear that we had four candidates. And out of these four candidates, the other two, we added their values and they all returned 0. That means nothing was deducted, nothing was added to the other two candidates. So instead of bogging you down with so much data, we decided to omit them and compare only the two datasets from the first two candidates. And so, this is what came up from Likkoni. If you look at it, we have the station and then there's stream of the station. For example, Mthongwe had three streams and they all captured there as this is the stream. The first values are the server forms for the honorable Prime Minister. And the other is the server form, the server results for the Dr. Ruto. And then on this other side, we have the BOMAS results for the Prime Minister and Dr. Ruto also here. So when we try to, just simple math, we try to subtract one dataset from the other, we have results here. You will see votes deducted from Raila and votes added to Ruto on this other side. So at once, because now this is a computer system, you don't worry about it, what it gives you, what it gives you, that's it. Then it highlighted this particular station. But now, Jacob has lost 100 here and Ruto has gained 100. And it gives you a total of 100 and 100 here. That is there. So that is what is recorded here as Ruto, as Jacob losing 100 and Ruto gaining 100. If you come to this, it's the same process. Okay, let me take you through this. You will note that. Let me take you through them a bit. Just as a clarity so that you see, I'll only do one and then the rest will follow just like that. So I have showed you here that here, it is indicating that only this LiquorDEP has 100 lost and 100 gained. So we go and confirm with the forms, the original forms. Because we don't want to add or remove anything, we pick on this. And then we go to that LiquorDEP where it is and you will see that here Jacob has 270 and Ruto has 79. And this is the form from Likkoni constituency. If you look at this form and you pick it up and go with it to IABC, they can easily accept it that this is their form. Because it has all the features that are needed for it to be an IABC form. Then, when we go and check on this other side, to tell you that the system wasn't cooking anything. We go to that same LiquorDEP and we note that here Jacob has 170 and now Ruto has 179. If you compare with this, if you compare with this, it is 270 and 79. Now, you can see the trick that was being played here. The trick that was being played here is that you can see in this column, Jacob is having basically what we call tens of, tens of votes. Tens means it's not going up to 100. So, no, Ruto is seeing, really not that's what I wanted to say. But I'll explain that in another part. What you can see here in LiquorDEP is that he has 270 and Ruto has 179. And okay, what I wanted to say is this. You can see that there is a starting format, a standard here that he's getting in this particular constituency. He's getting tens while Jacob is getting hundreds. So this is by human behavior, a possibility that if this is the same word and looking at it that this is the same station, it is possible that these are his actual values everywhere. When we analyze this LiquorDEP again, we noticed that the room that voted highest in the constituency as a whole was, I think, room number four coming from LiquorDEP, was the highest returning 99.8% of the voters voting for Jacob and only 0.03% voting for Dr. Ruto. Then suddenly, in one of these rooms, you come and check and you realize it has shot to 179, which became a flag. So it became a flag, we had to go back to the forms and counter-check and we found it that it was there. So that is it from that place. I take you to this, which also has a 50 difference. And you note that the results are returning zero variances until you reach some stations. But here in Gazi Primary Room 1, there is 223 and 134, which suddenly in BOMAS changes to 123 and 234. That is BOMAS. This is what is the server's results that was released later. And as a data analyst, we couldn't just take this simple. It was looking like it was really planned. But you jump to another place and you note that here, Jacob has 277 and you can see the trend here. It is 200s, 100s, 300s and then you have 277 and Ruto has 102. And because he has shot up with 102 in one of these places, it was the easiest place to attack. And then to remove 200 votes and leave him with 77 and give Dr. Ruto now 300 votes. With a deduction of 200 in one place and an addition of 200 in another. The same trend moved down like that until now, when we realized that this was a really planned thing. Because if it's hundreds, 200s, 300s, it's easier to even say that there was a system generating it. But no, there was no system generating, it was deliberate, that's why we have a 50 here. 50, you can see a clear 156 changes to 106 and 132 changes to 182. If you think that's not true, let me take you just to this 51 and you look at it. So that 50 is found from Kilulu Primary. So in Kilulu Primary, where could it be? Should be the last bits. Here it is. You have 156 and you have 132 here in Kilulu. And then when you come to the BOMAS in Msumweni. Again, we look for Kilulu. We look for Kilulu in BOMAS. Now, it is clear here, it is 106 and it is 182. Because if you add all these values, they'll give you exactly 33,000 votes here and 12,000 on this side. But also if you add, if you add this side, you will get 34 and 11,000 votes. So what they are doing is to maintain the total number of valid votes, not to change at all. So registered voters not affected, total number of valid votes not affected. The only places where the effects were seen were on the two columns for Jacob and Dr. Ruto. All right, I want to take you to a different type of manipulation. That was direct transfer. You take here, add there. I want to take you to a different type of manipulation and let me take you to, I'll choose just a few. A place called Tabaj in Wajir County. I picked on it because it was sort of unique. Here, we noted that you couldn't tell who is winning in one station and who's losing in another one because at some point, Jacob is running the show and then suddenly he loses in some points. And then he starts picking up and running the show in some areas and then goes on like that and runs the show. At the same time, Dr. Ruto is losing somewhere and then he picks up and runs the show just like that and then all over like that. So you can't tell at the end of it, the real performance in this constituency. So what they were doing with that kind is to flip the results. And by flipping the results, you can easily see that now this column, which was belonging to Raila, is now belonging to Ruto. to Raila, is now belonging to Ruto. And this column that was now belonging to Ruto is now belonging to Raila. And these are the servers, the IABC portal results that we picked up from the public portal that they told us to pick up from. They are the ones who told us, add them by yourself, use your calculators and get your results. We did that and so these are the flips that were there. In these flips, you can easily see that what is lost on one side is gained on the other side and what is gained on one side, like here, is lost on the other side. And with that, what they were focused on is the final tally. So the final tally gives Jakom a loss of 823 and Dr. Ruto gains 823 votes. And that flip has worked perfect with very minimal view of what has been flipped. But the issue is, there is now a wide difference of 1,600 votes that you can see there. Because if one person is on the other end of the negative and the other person is on the other end of the positive, the gap is very wide. So in that case, we are talking of a wide gap of 1.6 and around 1,600 votes. This is another type of manipulation that was there and this is exactly what took place in Central Province and parts of Rift Valley. So Central Province had a lot of swap votes and then Rift Valley also had that kind of swapping of votes. But in places where they realized we could take only just this bit, they were doing exactly that. So that was my analysis and you can see it. Maybe if you want to confirm, you will go later and confirm by yourself, but I can take you just through this Tabaj one and then you confirm by yourself. Where is Tabaj? Let me close Msumweni because I'm done with it. In Tabaj, the server results are revealing that the Right Honourable Prime Minister, this are his column, this is his column and this is Dr. Ruto's column. This is David Maure's fourth column and that is Wajakoia's. So when we look at it, these two columns not affected. But let's look at the other BOMAS results now in Tabaj. I hope I still have internet, let me check. I hope they haven't attacked us again. This is the problem I was having earlier. Anyway, they can't beat us because I have it offline as well. Tabaj is in Wajir. Yeah, Tabaj is here. Let me pick it from offline and show it here. Here now you can easily see that on the server is indicating that these are columns belonging, column belonging to Jakom and this other column belongs to Ruto. While on this one, you can now see the 95, 9, so on, has changed and has now turned to this other side. So basically, that's what happened and you can even see that the final tallies are now swapped. Here it is 8, 9, 12 and Jakom now, Ruto has now 9, 7, 35 from the portal. That is the data used to declare the president. While here, the 9 belongs to Jakom and the 8, 8,900 belongs to Ruto. So it's a swap, giving a loss of just that. That's another type of manipulation. Now I'll take you to the, I think, two more types of manipulations and it will guide I want to go to Mavoko in Machakos. So Machakos, Mavoko, we have everything faring on well from the beginning. As you can see here, the BOMAS is reflecting exactly what the server is reflecting. It's reflecting all the way until when you reach some level and you know they are smart. They don't affect it at the beginning because, you may identify earlier, it is affected at the end of the data. So in this case, it was like Jakom gets his normal votes, but Dr. Ruto is added 100 votes in some stations and to this point, he ended up gaining 3,600 votes for free, just like Now I take you to Oljorok in Yandarwa because I want to pick a few things, few from places. Oljorok in Yandarwa. Now for those who normally say that probably Jakom did not fare well in Central Province, you can see here that the server results are indicating Jakom's values in hundreds and Dr. Ruto's also in hundreds, like that. But now, with just a thought that we need to be uniform throughout, they decide to remove all the hundreds and leave him with tens only, so that in Oljorok, he's having only tens and wherever there is hundreds, they get and take that hundred and add it directly to this other side. These are not my data. These are not the secretariat's data. I'm standing here on behalf of the ODM Secretariat, not me. So I, those who came late, I am not a whistleblower, I am just a person who is with the secretariat and explaining the data that was there. So in this case, you will note that it is like whether the other person gets 200 and the other person loses 100 doesn't matter, as long as it is flat, tens and the other person gets their hundreds. So here you can see, he goes ahead and even gets 200 while Jakom loses 100. Now this is another type that showed up in Central Province and so in this Oljorok, he lost 4,200 votes and Dr. Ruto gained 4,400 votes. Yeah, so we, I'll not, I'll not take you to the original forms because I've already showed you where to find them. They are here, but trust me, we are working with a team that they crush it, we raise it, they crush it, we raise it. So, lastly, or second last, before I take you to Rift Valley, is Othaya. I have also Othaya here to check on and you can note that here they decided now to do it. I think these were now the last minute rushes to bridge the gap, meet the constitutional threshold, declare president, things work. So here, it is take 100 and add even from the beginning and then where you are tired, stop. So they got tired there and stopped and everything and they realized also that on this other part, he was faring well and on this other part, he wasn't faring that well. So it was like give him a standard outcome of tens and Dr. Ruto gets a standard outcome of hundreds and with that, 6,800 votes lost and 7,100 votes gained. Yes, so. I want to take you to Moya, where I have an issue with the forms there. Moya is found in Kirin Yaga, I think. Where is Moya? You can see Moya, almost looks like, yes, in the servers, there were these values here and then there were these values here for Dr. Ruto in the servers, but they are very questionable servers. In this part, I want to take you directly to the forms and see some of the mischievous things that were happening in the forms. So let's go to one of the forms. This, I want to take you first to the IABC form at the BOMAS. Here you'll be happy to look at it and say this data was done well and here we have 71, 92, 78, so on, and Dr. Ruto gaining 317, this and that. And when you look at it, the form looks clean, nothing mysterious on it. And if you look at it, this is still okay, this is how their results were looking at, like at the BOMAS. And then you look at it and everything is fine. Until now Jakom is given 12,912 votes versus Ruto's 75,000 votes. But let's look at the whistleblower's form and see some mischief that somebody was doing before they could upload their values to the IABC servers. If you look at it, on the other side, we have 170, we have 71, but look at this. This is 171 and it's not even 171. There was a cut of some values that were superimposed on a result that was here. So that cut was foolishly done, such that it did not cover every data. So in this case, only IABC knows the values that are lying behind this 71, 92, 78. Only them would know, nobody else. And you can see that in this case, there were hundreds being gotten here and there were also hundreds being gotten here. But now when you go to IABC portal in the server, in the, in the BOMAS, it is a clear that it was rectified and now Jakom is given his 71 and Ruto has his comfortable 317. So even if he lost in Moya, even if he lost in Moya, then we have here hundreds and 300 is even seen here. We have a 300 seen here, we have 200 seen here, but this 66 is not part of this 2, looking at it keenly. This 66 is not part of this 2. There must be a 2 and then 2 more values behind it. So this happened at the BOMAS. And when you look at it at the end of it, the results addition do not reflect this with those cuts. And you can see those cuts were even made on this particular data, this set. This is normally the hardest image to edit. This image is called JPEG. The JPEG image is one of the hardest to edit. We can edit easily what is called a bitmap image and the bitmaps are these ones. This is a bitmap image, but this is a JPEG image. So how they edited even a JPEG image and superimposed data on top of it is still very questionable. So that happened in Moya. And from the look of things, what was happening in Moya there is probably what was happening in very many stations in Central Province. So that's why IABC is the only people who can tell you the actual values found in Central Province. Lastly, is to take you to where now things were done blatantly. It's like we don't care. We are doing it and we care less. Here, I'm taking you to Tarbo and Tinderet in Wasingesu. Where is this part here? Wasingesu, let's look at Tarbo. If you look at Tarbo here, look at a section like here, this particular section, where, okay, this was a swap. This was also another swap and you can see that at some places Jakom is getting up to 400 votes and Ruto is getting 6 votes and so on. So after that, they swapped it and realized that at the end of it, we have a total vote of 25,000. So lastly, because of time, and this is something you can go over by yourselves, I think the website is stable. It's not been touched. Is, lastly, Tinderet. Tinderet is found in Nandi and we have this. So this was the worst manipulation so far because there was no swapping, nothing. It's just like, even if you have 201, we are giving you just 1 and the 200 we give to Ruto. If you have 3 or 4, we give you just 4 and the 200 we give to Ruto. Even if you have 200, we give you 0 and the 200 we give to Ruto. If you have 30, we still give you 0 and the 30 we give to Ruto. If you have 400, as long as we give you the last value, it doesn't matter, we get the rest and give to the other side. So these are the types of manipulations, what you have done in that. And in this case, you can see Jakom lost 11,000 votes, 385. This is an ODM property and by extension as a Miola Umoja property. So I would refer you to go to a website that is called kenyaelectionresults.com. Now people go type other things. It's not Kenya's election results, neither is it Kenya elections result. You have to type it correctly as kenyaelectionresults.com, one word, and you will have your full analysis there. For those who don't want to go through everything, you have a PDF format of the entire polling stations, 46,000 of them and what happened in there. It is a little big and maybe I'll just download it to show you how it is, so that you can see the intermittency that was being used to manipulate various places according to Yeah, because it, here it's clear enough to show you that we did, we did not access 234 server forms, 34B. Or rather, we only accessed 238 server from 34B and 53 forms were not available. So this analysis does not include 53 stations and those 53 stations, they are all highlighted here. If you see something written "download" and there is nothing to download, means there is no form there. Just like that. So at the end of it, you have your values. You can see that everything looks fine in the polling stations. Nyali is fine, Likkoni looks fine. Until you come here, you see your first deduction. Then you come, other constituencies look fine. Until you come here, you have your other deductions. And then everything looks fine. You come here, you have your deduction. You have your deduction, like that, until places where you have swaps and so on. Oh, thank you. I'm done. It is reminding me of something that is critical to look at. Somebody will come out of here and say, you have showed us 2 forms. How will we know the difference between those 2 forms? They look alike, everything is alike. Then we went ahead and checked what could be the technical issue behind these forms. We decided to go and check on what is called the file size. The file size indicates whether forms are originating from the same source or they are originating from different sources. Now, when we looked at them, we noticed that all the server forms were having this type of figures. Like now, the Jangvu has 3.9 megabytes, while BOMAS is having 5 megabytes. And then when you come to others, they are, these ones are having lower megabytes, and then the BOMAs are having higher megabytes. If you look at it, you note that the scanners that scanned the forms at the BOMAs were not the same scanners that scanned the forms that were being posted at the portal. Now, what is the technical explanation behind this, if we can ask? It means, point number 1, the scanners that were scanning forms at BOMAs were of higher resolution. That means they were much more clearer, they were much more technical, and they were much more expensive. That is the explanation behind it. The scanners that were scanning the portal forms, the, the server forms, were of a lower resolution, such that it gives you lower quality. Then we started analyzing. Why would that happen? In 2013, 2017, there's a time that people were glued onto their screens and no results were coming. People were blaming IABC, but it was a technical error that they could not resolve at that time because they already formatted their scanners to send high-resolution datasets. So those datasets went and jammed the system, and in that case, results refused to flow. So when they said we are going to correct these things, we highly anticipate that the KIAMS kits that they reformatted later were now allowed to send lower-resolution datasets. And once, that is the reason why this 2022 election, there were no jamming. If you go to their, their website, you would get results. Every time, you'll get results. That is how we managed to even download all the results. So it's a pointer that the files from the lower resolution are files that came directly from the field. And that means they came from the returning officers directly to a specific server that was undisclosed. And then they were being taken and reformatted, and then scanned again with a higher-resolution server. I mean, the scanner that would give you, now check out this only. Likkoni, where there was only one manipulation of one polling station, we have 4.6 megabytes of the result form from the server. And the BOMAs one now raises it to 9.6 megabytes. So that is just it, to show that there was a little bit of a change. This is subject to confirming if you can access the actual KIAMS kits. And also, IABC is the only one who has rights of access to those ones. God bless you. Thank you.
You know, I don't know whether to tell you to clap from the story we have seen. But for the good job he did, please, let's give him a heart clap. We are not clapping because of what you've seen, but because somebody took his time to analyze them. Thank you very much. Please, that, that is the information that is there, and we ask these people, you really want, let's compare this with what is in there. And I don't know why they're afraid because if I was the winner, I would rush and give you this to prove to you. But why are they reluctant? Kunakitu. Sivyo? Si kunakitu? Secondly, who was administering the elections? Wasn't it IABC? Wasn't it IABC? And the chair of IABC was who? Chebukati. So why has William Ruto now assumed the chair of IABC? We are not asking Ruto to open the servers because he was not IABC. So why is he always saying servers want to be opened? And he was not the IABC chair? Ask yourself those questions. And then, please, you can take over. Where's then? Then, please, that's what we have to present. Asanteni.
So, um, of course, some of you know me as an artist. I don't think that was enough in terms of appreciating both Odoorungwen and our brother Barabas. So we do kamoshi, you know? You know how to do kamoshi, yeah? And, and to call the rains and to gather the, the clouds? So kamoshi, kamoshi, kamoshi. Alafu kunanda, manyunu, manyunu, manyunu. Manyuni. Nguwa. Nguwa inaongezeta. Kubwa sana. Radhi! Mwajatu.
Thank, thank you very much. Now, I will just make one simple announcement, remind us how this meeting is slightly different from the kind of meetings people are used to. I've seen a number of our honorable members have joined us. According to our leadership today, your role is to take very keen notes. This is a people's meeting. So we are now entering a, a phase where a select number of individuals who had indicated on a first-come, first-basis that they would like to speak in this gathering. Then after those about 8 to 10 people, we go to plenary. And plenary will be held in a way which basically says show of hand, and then we try all the sides and give people show of hands. Those who are still slightly standing at the door, there are few chairs remaining upstairs, so you, you could go and find yourself to the, to the balcony. The first person and brother and comrade who had indicated their wish to share their thoughts with the leadership is none other than Brother Khasheki Gashihi from the Social Justice Centre. Brother Khasheki. Brother Khasheki, as he's coming, normally he speaks with fireworks and, and, and consistency, consistency in ideology. So please.
Viva, viva! Forward with the People's March, State House forward! Long live Baba, long live! First of all, I'm very humbled here, and I really appreciate you of you. Na kwa presence here, humble kwa, kwa presence here na Baba, na yini wote, freedom fighter, mamewetu malanda karua. Na all the leaders here, Azimio, I really appreciate you na for coming back here to the Shireen of Resistance. As you know, mya koyote, na Baba, ukiyasoma historie ya Baba, even his nameing, Laila Amolo Odinga, he struggled for his name. Just imagine when you have na, na priest, na kukubatisha na nguvu, akupatia majina ambao, Baba kuataki, na Baba kuasema hapana, he must get an African name. Just imagine, wale, tokakuwa kanisa, wakaka for months, then until the bishop said, no, you can bring them, I baptize them. Tukrapia ni Baba vana. So we are so humbled for, by a social justice movement to be here. And we are very happy that we are allowed to speak. Some of my colleagues would say something, but we have some issues tuna takaku zungumuzia kwaomba because the Electro Justice, Amadeo Electro Justice Campaign, Baba lisungumuzia pia before, 2017. Now, what has been shared here is very clear that there was manipulation. And even the German court, na I'm sure comrade like Kina Amolo, Tinder Amolo, when they are talking about this or any BVR, they have made, German court, you may say, you can't leave machine to vote for people's leadership. Na Baba may say, mwa kwa zia 2017 and even now. And we can hear, see here is manipulation. So sisi kile tuna takakuwa kwa e, Electro Justice Campaign, na People's March to State House. Niya kwaomba lazima pia tuambatana issue za social justice. Eh, long live Baba, long live! Long live Baba, long live! Forward with resistance, forward! Forward with March to State House, forward! Asanteni na Baba, nikuanasema kwaza, troksherekeya koiyo mya koyote. Kuna watu nasema, ati utuwache kwa wilderness. Ati Baba retire, atuwache kwa wilderness. Sisi tukuliwe, utuwache kwa sababu. These are hyena, they are political hyena. There's 2, there's 2 fellows in State House. They are political hyena. They know, when you leave us, before we reach Ghana. They know, when you leave us, before we reach Kanak.